Welcome to the March 11th special session of the Ann Arbor City Council. Would the clerk please read our call to, pardon me, read our order and notice of call of special session?
Notice is hereby given that a special session of the City of Ann Arbor City Council will be held Monday, March 11th, 2019 at 6 o'clock PM in the City Council chambers, second floor of the Geisse Larkham Jr. City Hall building, 301 East Huron Street for the following purpose: to hold a closed session under the Michigan Open Meetings Act for a personnel evaluation of the city attorney and a modification of employment agreement with the city attorney.
If you're able, please rise for and join us for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a objective justice for all.
Would our clerk please call the roll of council?
Councilmember Hayner?
Here.
Councilmember Bannister?
Here.
Councilmember Griswold?
Here.
Councilmember Lum?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Eaton?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Ramlowe?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion please to approve the agenda. Move by Councilmember Ramlowe, seconded by Councilmember Lum. Discussion of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. The agenda is approved. We now come to public comment general time. Public comment general time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment general time, one need not have signed up in advance. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time. And finally, if you require assistance in speaking before council, we would be delighted to provide it to you. Is there anyone who would like to speak at public comment? Seeing no in public comment is closed. May I have a motion please to go into closed session under the Open Meetings Act, MCLA 15 dot 268A for personnel evaluation of the city attorney?
Mayor, there's one other note. Just for the record, this is done under the Open Meetings Act at the request of the city attorney and through the provision in my contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Move by Councilmember Lum, seconded by Councilmember Grant. Discussion, roll call vote please, starting with councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Griswold, thank you.
Yes. Given that this is the first time I have done this type of evaluation, what is the process or has it been laid out in writing somewhere?
The process is-
Mr. Postman, by all means.
Yeah. The process is that we go into closed session to discuss personnel evaluation under the Open Meetings Act, and that certainly is a time for the admin committee that has been spending time on this to present their findings to the whole council.
Oh, okay. And that will be done with you present for all of the meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I would just like to register in open session that that's not the way. I have done it in the past as a public official, and I'm willing to do it that way, but I think that there are some serious shortfalls.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call vote please on the closed session, starting with Councilmember Ramlowe.
Councilmember Ramlowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bannister?
Yes.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lum?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are in closed session.
Discussion, all in favor? [S01][S01] All opposed. [S01] We are back in open session. D.C.[S01] one,[S01] resolution to amend the employment agreement for city attorney Stephen K.[S01] Postema, moved by Councilmember Smith,[S01] seconded by Councilmember Ramloey. Discussion of D.C.[S01] one. [S01] Councilmember Eaton.
Thank you. [S02] Could you strike my name as a -- from the sponsor list on this item,[S02] please?
Councilmember Griswold.
Is now the time to say nice things? [S01] Please. Okay.
It's always time to say nice things.
I want to acknowledge the legal orientation that was given to new council members. I found that very helpful. [S03] I want to acknowledge that the legal department has always been open and supportive to me as a new council member. I want to acknowledge that some of the shortfalls are actually the responsibility of our council and that we will strive. I will encourage and that we will strive, I will encourage us to strive, to be a stronger team in the future. I am asking that my name be stricken from the resolution, not because of what one person said or didn't say, but because my expectations are for a higher level of communication.
Councilmember Lum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our special session tonight is to amend the employment contract of our city attorney, Mr. Postema. The performance review for Mr. Postema covering the 2018 calendar year has been completed and the council administration committee consisting of Mayor Taylor, councilmembers Eaton, Grant, Griswold, and I are recommending a salary increase of three percent for Mr. Postema effective January first, 2019. Mr. Postema has been with the city for 16 years now and for 2018, Mr. Postema was rated very highly by his direct reports and by the service area administrators, his peers. Mr. Postema is one of two city employees who reports directly to city council, the other is the city administrator. All council members and the mayor participated in Mr. Postema's performance evaluation. His overall performance assessment from council was strong and he has been apprised of a couple of goals and potential areas of improvement. The city attorney's position is certainly an important one for the city and for council in terms of both responsibility and leadership. City council, the city administrator, and other city staff all rely on Mr. Postema's legal advice and services. Mr. Postema has provided excellent leadership to the city over the past year in many areas, notably the implementation of of a succession planning model. The council administration committee recommends that council approve this resolution which will increase Mr. Postema's salary by three percent effective January first, 2019. The resolution also directs the committee to place Mr. Postema's final written performance evaluation in his personnel file. Thank you for your consideration and thanks to my colleagues on the administration committee for your participation and your efforts.
Further discussion? Councilmember Hainer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to second what Councilmember Griswold said. As a new council member here, I've I've found Mr. Postema to be very accessible and he's held these orientation sessions with us, he's answered all our questions and often when I've copied him on on odd questions of of a somewhat legal nature that constituents send to me, he's been very most helpful and so I've really appreciated that and, you know, we really don't get to say much about this until next year and, you know, I look forward to that, of course, and just that, that I think it's it's been a great help and and if you don't find me supporting a raise, it's just a matter of principle, it does not reflect on the the good that you've done for me personally, so thank you.
Councilmember Lum, I think you formally need to, the motion that you have is blank and so while I'd like a blank unlimited percent increase, I think it is wiser for the council to put an actual amount in that you're voting on.
My apologies, I spoke to it, but I didn't amend the resolution, so I would, sorry, thank you and thank you, Mr. Postema. Move to amend the first section under the first resolve clause, section 2.1 of the agreement be changed to reflect an increase to an annual salary.
One hundred ninety thousand thirty-five dollars.
Thank you. Hundred ninety thousand thirty-five dollars, effective January first, 2019.
Seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Discussion of the amendment.
Thank you, just to give a little context from admin, the proposed increase is in line with what the rest of city employees, non-union, correct, received, so it's just in line with the increases that everyone else in the city received this year.
Further discussion of the amendment?
Could we have a roll call?
Did it crest for a roll call vote for the discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Ramloey.
Yes. No, sorry.
Councilmember Ramloey?
No.
Yes. Councilmember Hainer?
No.
Councilmember Bannister?
No.
Councilmember Griswold?
No.
Councilmember Lum?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Further discussion, the motion as amended. I'd like to, what I think is closing out this discussion by by simply saying that I am, you know, very pleased and proud of Mr. Postema's service as as city attorney for the city of Ann Arbor and the office that he has that he has led for years and constructed. You know, I believe that our legal office, our legal team is is the envy of the state and and it ought to be. Nobody, nobody in the city, you know, loves the city and cares for it more than more than Mr. Postema and, you know, we we reap, we reap the benefits of his service and the benefits of the outstanding attorneys that that work in his office presently and have worked in his office in the in the recent and distant past. So I am, I'm delighted that we'll be moving forward on this basis and that we will continue to, all of us, work together for the benefit of the community. Further discussion? Councilmember Ramloey.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I would just like to echo your sentiments. It's a tough job and I think you gotta do it more for than the money and you gotta actually have a liking and a passion for the community that you work in for, so hopefully, you know, we can continue this relationship and new council members didn't get to weigh in on it this year, but we got to see some of the process and so we kind of know what we're in for next year and like to give thanks to Councilmember Lum and Councilmember Grant for a lot of the work and others on the admin committee, because it does seem like a lot of behind the scenes work on this and I appreciate their efforts.
Further discussion? I should have, Councilmember Ramloey, you you do what I should have recollected, that is to to thank councilmembers Grant and Lum. You're exactly right, they did do yeoman's work to to put together this 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 evaluation, you know, working with, you know, a lot of data and doing it well, so thank you for reminding us and thank you all for for doing it. Further discussion? On the main motion as amended, roll call vote, please start with Councilmember Ramloey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hainer?
No.
Councilmember Bannister?
No.
Councilmember Griswold?
No.
Councilmember Lum?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion, please, to adjourn, move by?
Mayor, before that, would you mind if I read a statement as I usually do? I know we're running a little late, but I I do think it's important since we only do this once a year. Mayor and council, I appreciate the taking the time tonight to discuss my evaluation. I would like to thank the administration committee for coordinating this effort. In particular, I'd like to thank Councilmember Lum who took over what is essentially a thankless task of chairing the review process. 2018 has been a significant year of transition. I am most pleased with having completed a major succession planning in the office. I want to thank the council for fully supporting this effort. I have replaced attorneys with a total of 126 years of experience and 60 years of historical knowledge of the operations of the city and hired new attorneys in four crucial areas. I would like to thank my staff. During 2018, they have expanded their capacities to address the legal problems that have arisen. Council, you have entrusted me to lead this office and I am honored to do so. I am humbled by my staff's review of my leadership. It is helpful in recruiting to find attorneys that they see a great sense of purpose in representing the city. This is a value that I share with the city administrator and we both seek to instill this value, particularly in today's climate with corrosive political discourse the norm at the federal and state level, and this is why the focus on the purpose and the importance of local government is one that has always been a focus to me and many of you know that. Likewise, you have sought the reviews of the service area administrators. Our office serves them in all facets of legal interface with their responsibilities. It is a pleasure to work with them and I'm constantly amazed by their dedication to the city under very difficult circumstances. I'm honored to advise them and appreciate their confidence in my work and that work of my staff. Finally, the council, you were asked for for input also. Almost 16 years ago, the city of Ann Arbor was in significant turmoil. Because of this turmoil, I was asked and agreed to become the city attorney and take care of the city, but I told the council before I took this job that I would provide the best legal advice possible and that it would not always be what the council or some part of the council wanted to hear. That is the very nature of the job. That is because under the charter, I'm in charge with advising and counseling the city and I will continue to do so to the best of my ability. Now, the council is divided at times on issues and that is certainly to be expected in this city of Ann Arbor. That is really its hallmark and really this is how it should be in our system of government, but my legal advice on matters will be uniform and I continue to promise you that. There is much to be done in the coming year and I look forward to the challenges ahead. I recognize that the work of a council member is very difficult. It too is a thankless task and I think that is one thing that we can all agree on this without a voice vote or a roll call vote. One aspect of my job is providing new council orientation and thank you, many of the new council members, and outlining legal issues and advice and frankly, I really appreciate the interest of the new council members in all manners of law, ranging from the esoteric and perhaps at some time somewhat, shall we say, mundane. I appreciate your patience. Again, council, I appreciate the time taken for this special session and annual review. Chair of the evaluation committee, Councilmember Lum, the administration committee, and the whole council, I thank you for the support tonight that you have in me to do the job that I will do. Good night.
May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Move by Councilmember Lum, seconded by Councilmember Griswold. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Welcome. We now have a work, our work session. We're going to take a three-minute break. Tick tock, tick tock. We'll take a very short break, we'll be right back. We'll be right back. Never worries. Good evening and welcome to the March 11 work session of Ann Arbor City Council. My apologies for us beginning late. We have just come out of a special session and taken a short bio break. We have before us WS1, the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Water Cost Service, pardon me, Water Cost of Service Review and Rate Structure Alternatives Analysis, presented to us by the indomitable Mr. Hupe. Mr. Hupe, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Craig Hupe, Public Services Area Administrator. And tonight, we are presenting the Cost of Service Review and Rate Alternative Study. With us, we will have Robert Ryle and Matt Carpenter of Arcadis, who did the review. Also with me tonight, I have Marty Prashan, Lynn Chamowitz of Staff, and Matt Rettin from the Attorney's Office. And I don't know if Abby is still... Abby Elias of the Attorney's Office is also here. So with that, we'll turn it over to Arcadis.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Craig, and thank you, council, for your time this evening. My name is Robert Ryle with Arcadis. I lead Arcadis's Financial Services Practice for North America and am joined by my colleague, Matt Carpenter, also a rate practitioner and just happens to run our business for both Michigan and Ohio. Very quickly, I will just give you a short summary of what we have in our presentation, our introductions, followed by some foundational information about rate making and rate setting. We think that that may be very useful for some of our discussions to come. We have some benchmarking information based off of national sources of information for water utilities, a overview of our review of the rate study, and then the bulk of our presentation is around alternatives that we have identified and that we have results for and we want to present to you for your consideration. So very quickly, a little bit of information about my background. I have been working in the water and wastewater industry as a rate and financial services practitioner for about 20 years. I've probably done upwards of 200 rate and financial related studies. I mentioned I run the practice area for Arcadis. I am an active member within the American Water Works Association Rates and Charges Committee. This is a committee that establishes industry practice for establishing water rates. We developed what we call the M1 Manual, which is our manual of practice. There's also the Finance Accounting and Management Controls Committee within AWWA that's really more focused on financial planning. I'm also an active member in that association. Have contributed to both manuals of practice, the M1 that I mentioned, as well as what we call the M29, which is focused on water utility capital financing.
Good evening. I'm Matt Carpenter and briefly, similar to Robert, I've got about a 20-year career, the first half of which or so was spent on the public sector side, working with public utilities, water and wastewater utilities. I've participated in numerous Midwestern financial rate studies and really led the financial planning for the utility that I worked for previously. As Robert mentioned, I'm responsible for the Arcadis business in Michigan and Ohio and have expertise in the appropriate subject matter areas. So starting, we thought we'd give a bit of just kind of context for you in terms of different operating structures that we see when we do these sorts of studies and evaluations. There's really three kind of primary means of operating a public utility. So the first would be an enterprise fund. This is the mechanism that Ann Arbor uses and frankly, what most public utilities utilize. The concept here is pretty simple. It's that the utility is a self-supporting, separately accounted-for entity that pays its own way and levies rates and fees to recover the costs of the utility. The second is a general government model, which is essentially funded with a tax-based sort of approach. It's very uncommon. It is possible, but extremely uncommon. And then a privatized utility, which is where a community makes the decision to sell its infrastructure to a private company. And the distinction here really is that it's owned by a for-profit corporation that has to, by its very nature, generate a profit. Next, we'll talk a little bit about kind of the cost allocation methodologies here. This is sort of a rate-making 101. And so there's several different mechanisms or methodologies by which utilities can recover costs. The three kind of keys here are the utility basis, commodity demand, and base extra capacity are the three methodologies that we see. So the utility basis is a common methodology for electric and gas utilities, also for water utilities that are calculating and generating wholesale rates whereby the utility might sell service to another entity that then takes that service and provides it to the end customer. And then the other two methods, the commodity demand and the base extra capacity, are really very similar methodologies that use a cash basis accounting to allocate O and M costs, operation and maintenance costs, capital costs, debt service, et cetera. Takes the cash needs of the utility and allocates those to functional categories and we'll get into this in greater detail. So what are the objectives of cost-based rate making? There's really about five key factors that we're looking for. Full cost recovery, so you want rates that are adequate, rates that will recover the costs of operating the utility. The rates need to be cost-based and equitable, easy to understand and administer, legal and defendable, and then stable and predictable. So we're really trying to accomplish and satisfy these five objectives. The process that we go through in a rate-setting process is revenue requirements first, the revenue sufficiency first, which essentially is looking at the revenues required to operate the utility and ensuring that we're going to collect enough money to pay for the expenses of the utility. Cost of service is where we allocate those revenue requirements or those costs into various different customer classes. And so we may refer to them a bit in the discussion as buckets of costs. So you take the overall costs and you allocate them to certain buckets or allocations. And then you design a rate that recovers costs from the customers who are using the service of the utility in a proportional and equitable manner. So Arcadis was hired and I wanted to spend just a quick moment on what our scope was so that you have some context for where we came from. So we were hired to do really predominantly three things. The first was to review the rate study that was concluded previously, to make sure that it complies with industry best practices. The short summary of that, you'll see a little more, is that we've done so and it does comply with industry best practice. The second is really where the bulk of our effort has been and that's identifying alternative options for the council and the administration to consider that are still consistent with the methodology and the industry standards and best practices. And then the third piece of our scope really is this meeting tonight, making a presentation to you and hopefully helping you with understanding the options that are available and at your So the first piece of our work really was around evaluating that initial study. We considered the revenue sufficiency piece, which is, if you recall, the first piece of the first phase of work. We found that everything was in perfect working order here. Your previous rate study looked at an appropriate time period, considered all of the right factors, minimum reserve targets within your funds, debt service coverage, the capital funding plan, everything is appropriate and sufficient. The next piece of work was really looking at the methodology or the allocations that were done. And so your previous study really is in line with industry standards. The American Water Works Association and Robert previously mentioned, the M1 Manual is really sort of the rate-making bible, if you will, for practitioners in this space. And so everything is within the guidance and the bounds of industry best practices here. Your process that you went through looked at allocating costs on the base extra capacity method, which is really the predominant method used in the industry. And you allocated costs to four customer classes, residential, non-res, multifamily, which was a newly addition, a newly added customer class with this rate study, but we found it to be an appropriate addition. And then also a water-only customer class. These are all very consistent and typical customer classes within the industry. And then the water rate calculation, that kind of third piece of the approach. And so as we reviewed the study, we made no recommended changes to the fixed rate charges for the water utility, no recommended changes to the water-only charges. We concur with the addition of the multifamily customer class. And then our conclusion was that the residential fourth tier may warrant some additional consideration and we'll provide a lot of detail around this as the presentation goes. So next, we provide some benchmarking information that we thought might be helpful in terms of the structure of residential rate recovery. And so you'll see here, there are lots of different mechanisms by which the utility could choose to recover rates. By and far, the largest percentage on the chart you see here is increasing block structure. That is what was recommended as part of your study and what was part of Ann Arbor's rates prior to this newly enacted rate structure. So you're consistent with industry standard. And then here, the quote on the right-hand side is directly out of that M1 Manual, that increasing block rates are most commonly applied to residential customers because of their relatively homogeneous demand pattern. The source of our data here for the different types of rate structures is also industry standard and best practice. The AMWA is the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies. The city of Ann Arbor is a member of AMWA. They produce an annual survey of rates and charges. And so again, this is an industry benchmark that we pulled from. For non-residential customer classes, the mechanism by which costs are most commonly allocated from the same AMWA study is uniform rates for non-residential customers. And really, the reason behind that, generally speaking, is that non-residential customers typically do not have the same sorts of characteristics and demand patterns that a residential customer base might. And then just some useful information, and you'll see an iteration of this slide presented throughout really the remainder of the presentation tonight. But as a baseline, we thought it might be useful to look at kind of national average, national 75th percentile, and the city of Ann Arbor's current rate structure that is in place today, side by side at various different consumption levels. So 15 CCF, a CCF is 100 cubic feet. That's kind of the commonly accepted unit of measurement in the water industry for rate making. A cubic foot of water is about seven and a half gallons of water. And so you'll see here, this is a quarterly bill of 1,500 cubic feet of water or 3,000 cubic feet of water, et cetera. So you'll see here on the chart that Ann Arbor has rates at the lower consumption levels, 15 CCF levels, that are significantly below the national average and of course, the 75th percentile. And at the bottom of the row that shows cumulative percentage, 60% of your customers fall in that 15 CCF or lower consumption range in a quarter. As we move up the scale, you'll notice that the city starts to creep up at the 30 CCF level. You're now above the national average in terms of cost, but below the 75th percentile. And that represents about 93% of your residential customers. And then when we get to the 45 CCF and 90 CCF, you see that the city's current rate structure exceeds and even significantly so exceeds the national average and the 75th percentile. And again, this data comes from a survey that the American Water Works Association did. This is 2016 data, but it's the most current version of their study that's available. And then just a quick point around increasing block rate structures. And so again, these are quotes directly out of the industry manual, the M1 Manual. There's no single method of setting the size or the unit price of the usage blocks under the increasing block approach. And that increasing block rates require applying judgment and utility policy regarding the number of blocks, the point at which one block begins, ends, and the next begins, and the relative price levels of the blocks. And so you'll see again, some additional discussion around this topic of applying judgment and local utility policy to the rate design mechanism here in the presentation later. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Robert to walk you through some of the alternatives and options that we've considered and developed here for you.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to start with residential rates and then we'll move on to non-residential. So within your residential rates, we've developed really four alternatives. I would say there are new alternatives. The first is what we would call a two-tier structure. You currently have a four-tier structure. This would be two tiers of rates based on winter and summer usage. Option two is a consolidation of what you currently have, consolidating your third and fourth tiers into a single rate. The third option, what the industry calls a uniform rate. So that's one volumetric rate that residential customers would pay for all units of consumption. And then the fourth or final option is what we have called a resetting of tiers. But we at Arcadis took a step back. We said, what would we do logically? What type of judgment would we employ if we were designing new residential rates for the city of Ann Arbor? And we'll walk you through our thought process and what we put into that structure. Before we get to the new alternatives, I just want to take a step back in time and talk a little bit about what you all did last year. On the left-hand side of your screen, those are your current residential water rates. This is what you're currently charging your residential customers. A base charge, when we say base charge, that's a fee that doesn't change. Doesn't matter how much water the customer uses. They could use no water and they're still going to get charged $20.89. They could be a high-consumption customer and they'll be charged $20.89 plus the volumetric components. Moving down this table, we start to get into what we call the tiers. You see four different tiers. It's based off of different levels of a customer's usage. So a residential customer that used between one and nine units, a unit being 100 cubic feet, they'll be charged $1.77 per 100 cubic feet of water that they use within this tier. When they get to their 10th unit of water, that rate goes up. It's a tiered, it's an inclining block rate structure. So from 10 to 18 CCF, the rate goes to $2.83 and then going forward, $6.35. And then your very top tier, your fourth tier for usage above, quarterly usage above 3600 cubic feet, your customers are charged $14.08 for every 100 cubic feet of water that they use. So before adopting that rate structure that I just went through, your previous rates was similar in that you did have a tiered rate structure. The base charge was $11.25. The first tier, a little bit different, one to seven units, $1.55. Then eight to 28 units and the rate was $3.37. And then you had a third tier, which captured all of a customer's consumption above 28 units, so 2800 cubic feet, and that rate was $5.89. I do want to talk a little bit about pros and cons, which I'm going to do as we go through each of these alternatives. And I'll just talk very quickly about some of the pros and cons that we see with your existing rate structure. So first, the existing rates are cost-based. My colleague had mentioned the cost allocation process, where we're assigning costs to buckets, right? The rates that you have in place, they recover the residential bucket of costs. So they are cost-based. And every alternative that we present this evening is going to be cost-based. It will recover the cost assigned to that residential bucket. The current rate structure is conservation-oriented, right? The more water that you use, the more that you pay. We see that as a conservation rate structure in the business. You're encouraging customers to use less water. I also see an affordability element within your existing rates. I see water in your first tier, that lower usage of consumption, I see a lower rate. I see a rate that is consistent, although different, from your past rate. So I think that there's an element of affordability that is built into the current rate structure. Some of the cons, revenue stability, right? You charge a lot of money at the fourth-tier rate. If you have a very wet summer and your customers are not irrigating and your utility is using less water, that's going to be a higher proportional change in the revenue that you generate. If customers use less water, that starts in the top tiers first, which are the highest per unit cost to the customer, but revenue to the utility. $14.08 per 100 cubic feet of water, that's a very strong rate. It's a very high rate in the industry. Perception, right? I understand that you've received comments from residents around this rate structure. So perhaps a perception of the structure may be a challenge. Some other considerations, bill impact. Higher-use customers are going to receive higher bills. Not really a pro or a con, you may want to do that. A lot of utilities, that's what they intend. They want their customers to use less water. Unit cost variability, the more water the customer uses, the higher it costs them on a per-unit basis. Not a pro or a con, but it is a consideration. It is an impact of your current rate structure. So let's move and talk about our first option. So the first option is what we call a two-tier. It's a two-tier rate structure. Again, you can see your current rates on the left-hand side. We'll include that in each of the reviews of the options. And then you see the rates for the two-tier structure, the same base charge, we haven't recommended any change there. But we do see a change in that instead of four tiers, we now see two. We base this off of average residential usage, which is about 18 CCF per quarter, right? So we have average usage and then all usage above that. The differential or the change, right, from $2.19 to $9.19 is based off of the usage during winter months. Winter months are primarily indoor water usage. Your residential customers aren't irrigating during the winter, but during the summer months, they are. So you see a different usage, you see them using more water. So we consider that differential in designing or outlining this structure alternative. So what do the impacts look like? If this structure were to be implemented, what would be the impacts to your residential customers? Well, you see the same national benchmarking information that we had presented previously, national average, national 75th percentile, the city of Ann Arbor's current residential water bill at current rates. And then we show option one. What would be the residential water bill at different levels of consumption, 15, 30, 45, 100 cubic feet? So you can see the change that would be seen on your residential customers' bills. At the bottom half of this slide, we're showing that same information, but we're showing it for every unit of consumption. So the X-axis, you see that goes from zero to 49, and that's usage, right? So customers that don't use any water, they don't see any change in their bill. Well, that's because we haven't changed the base charge. But as customers use water, they're going to see changes in their water bill. And the magnitude of these columns is the actual change in your residential customer's bill. So I do have to point out one typo that we discovered right before the presentation is that my slides say total bill. Well, that's not right. It's not the total bill. This is actually the difference. It's the change from the current bill to what the bill would look like under this option. I'll also point out the average, right? The average we've mentioned is 18 CCF for residential customers, which represents 71% of the city's water bills that you send out, right? So again, let's talk about pros and cons. So again, the first pro, this is a cost-based rate structure. We're capturing, and we've based this structure off of the full bucket of residential costs. There's a bit of simplicity perhaps to this rate structure. There's only two tiers, as opposed to four. It's fairly compatible, right? The break in this structure from tier one to tier two is at 18 CCF, which is also a breaking point between your current tier-two and tier-three rate. So there's some consistency with what you currently have in place. Perhaps a pro is that this does eliminate the fourth tier, which is a very strong rate that you currently have. Some cons, there's a weaker price signal, right? We're not charging as much for higher usage of water. There's still a conservation signal. The more you use, the more you're going to pay. When you reach 18 units of service and above, you're paying a higher rate. So there's still conservation, but perhaps it's not as strong as the current four-tier structure that you have. A con, and this is a con that we're going to see in every single option, there's a bill impact. You cannot change the rate structure without some bills going up and some bills going down. It's kind of like a balloon. If you squeeze a balloon, you can make one area smaller, but then somewhere else has got to get bigger. And it's not much different in ratemaking. You have to get the revenue from somewhere. And so we see that. We see that in, if we look at the bills between 20 and 45 CCF, we see that these bills will actually go up. That represents about 20% of the bills that the city issues. Bills below 45 units of service, those bills will go down. So not necessarily a pro or a con, but it is a consideration. It is the impact of this alternative. I'm going to move to option two, which is a three-tier structure. The foundation of this is the current structure that you have in place. Again, showing that on the left-hand side with the alternative on the right. You can see that the only change here is a consolidation. It would be to consolidate your third and fourth tier. Same breaking points for the tiers, the same rate for tier one, the same rate for tier two, no change there. But we're consolidating tiers three and four into a single rate for that usage level above 18 CCF. So again, what does that mean in terms of impact to my residential customers? Same type of information that we saw previously. Quite frankly, a very similar impact, although some differences. We don't see any impact to bills for water usage at 18 units and less. Well, it's because we haven't changed the rate. We didn't touch tier one, we didn't touch tier two. What we changed are tier three and four, and we consolidated that into one single rate. So pros and cons of this structure. Again, the pro, it's cost-based. We're recovering all the residential costs that are in the residential bucket. Perhaps a bit of simplicity, it's not four tiers, it's three tiers. It's still a tiered structure, but maybe a bit simpler. Compatibility, we're really consolidating what you currently have. So it is compatible with where you're currently at. And we see that in the 0 to 18 usage range, where those bills are not going to see any change. Perhaps a pro, we're eliminating the fourth tier. The con, as in every case, is that there are bill impacts. And those impacts, they happen between roughly 19 and 45 CCF. We see those bills will increase. Bills beyond 45 units of water, 4500 cubic feet, those bills will go down. So moving to our third alternative, this is a uniform rate. So a uniform rate is one volumetric rate for each unit of service, for each 100 cubic feet. There's no tiers. Residential customers are charged the same rate regardless of how much water they use. When we consider a uniform rate, that rate would be $4.16 in order to recover that same bucket of cost for your residential customers. As we've seen previously, the impact, the bill impact of this particular rate structure or this rate change, again, pros and cons. It's cost-based. It is simpler. There's one unit rate. There's only one tier for residential customers. Revenue stability, there'll still be revenue loss if customers were not to use as much water, but it won't be as pronounced, right? That loss is $4.19 per unit, not 14. So perhaps a bit more revenue stability. There's some consistency, right? It's the same type of structure that you are charging other customer classes. So that may have a positive perception. Some cons, it is a structural change. Every time we change the structure, we're going to see bill impacts. And you see that with the blue-colored bars. You can see what bills go up and what bills go down. Perhaps, perhaps there could be an affordability concern here, because unlike the first two options, we do see higher bill impacts at lower units of consumption. We didn't quite see that as much in the first two options, but we do with the uniform rate structure. Other considerations, there still is a price signal. More water you use, the more you pay. It's not going to be as strong as a tiered structure. It's not going to be as strong of a conservation signal as what you have in your current rate structure. So let's talk about the fourth option, right? This is the option of really resetting. This is Arcataz stepping back and saying, what do we think? What would be a good logical approach to take in establishing rates? And so what we came up with is a three-tiered structure. And so tier one, kind of our basis for this structure would be to try and capture average residential indoor usage, right? And so the way we went about that is looking at your winter average usage. Your customers don't irrigate much in the wintertime, so that's a good gauge of what they're using on indoor activities. The second tier is we looked at, we wanted to capture average, average outdoor usage. So what we did is we looked at, what do your residential customers use over the summer months, right? That's when they're irrigating. What is that average usage? And we saw that average usage to be about 20 CCF. The indoor usage, about 16 CCF. And we said, okay, so for a third tier, perhaps we'll charge the customers, the third tier, for all outdoor usage that is above average. And so we took, we looked at all usage above 2000 cubic feet or 2000 cubic feet. Our basis for establishing the tier differential, right? The dollar difference between tiers one, two, and three is first, winter average. What's the difference between winter average and summer average? What's that differential? And then for the third tier, what is the customer's maximum consecutive 90-day period of use for the residential customer class? And the reason we selected 90 days is because you bill quarterly, right? So that's consistent with the way that you bill your customers. So we looked at, what is the maximum usage of this customer class over that period of time? So the resulting rates on the right-hand side, so from one to 16 units of service, a rate of 217. 17 to 20, capturing that average outdoor usage, $4.10. And then everything above 20 units or 2000 cubic feet will be a rate of $8.90. So what does this impact look like? Again, same type of information that we've seen previously. And you can see the impact to your residential customers. And while you're looking at that, I'll go through pros and cons. So the pros, it's a cost basis. We've based this off of the bucket of residential costs that you need to recover. Perhaps there could be a better perception. We are eliminating the fourth tier that is currently very strong. Methodology, right? It's a different methodology. We think we've put some good judgment into this in terms of how we designed this and the different criteria and the components that we considered. The con, as always, there's a bill impact. Whenever you change your rate structure, some bills go up, some bills go down. And it's no different in this case. Other considerations, for usage below 23 units of service, I'll call it a minimal impact to those customers. We do see some changes, but generally, it's fairly minimal below the average usage level. For bills between 22 and 44 CCF, we see an increase, right? And for usage below 42 units, we see a decrease in those particular bills. So it's just a summary of how your residential water bills would change with this particular rate structure option. So with that, I'm going to move over to non-residential customers. And we've identified two different options, calling those A and B in order to distinguish between residential and non-residential. So the first option is a seasonal rate alternative. And so essentially, what a seasonal rate is, is your non-residential customers would pay one rate for all usage during winter months, and then they pay a different, higher rate during the summer months. All non-residential customers. It doesn't matter how much water you use. It's one rate during the winter, and it's one rate during the summer for all customers. Option B is what we call the peaking alternative. And we've designed this around the non-residential structure that you had in place before you adopted the new non-residential rate. So if you wanted to look back and go back to something similar to what you previously had, we've developed that in option B. So let's talk a little bit about current rates and then past rates. So your current rate for all non-residential customers is $3.83 per 100 cubic feet of water that they use. Looking at the same national survey, did provide some information around what they call non-manufacturing and commercial. It's basically non-residential customers. Only provided at one unit of usage, which was 90 CCF. But even at that point, we can see the national average, the 75th percentile, and then what the non-residential bill would be under your current non-residential rate, which really falls very close within that national average. So past rates, I think those worth revisiting, especially since we have option B, which tried to mirror that past structure. So in the past, you had really subcategories of non-residential customers based off of their peaking, right? You looked at their average hour usage versus their maximum hour, and what is that peak? What's the difference? So for peak one customers, which I understand represented about 98% of your non-residential, majority of your non-residential customers were this peaking one, the rate was $3.81. Not much different from where you're at today. Peaking two was a factor between eight and five. So if your maximum hour was between eight and five times your average hour, the rate went up, $7.26. Peak three, greater than a peaking factor of eight, the rate was $12.44. So these particular rates were assigned to those subcategories of non-residential customers. So the rate doesn't change based off of how much water you use. If you're a peak two customer, it's $7.26 for every unit of water that you use, okay? So it's a little bit different than a tiered structure, but still tried to capture some of the peaking elements, if you will, of non-residential. Let's look at option A. This is the seasonal alternative. So let me tell you about what we're showing in this figure. And I'll start with the yellow line that you see. So the yellow line that you see horizontally across the figure, that's your current rate, For each month of the year, January through December, you can see approximately how much water is being used by non-residential customers. And we're also showing what the seasonal rate would be. So for January, February, March, and April, the seasonal rate for all non-residential customers would be $2.41, so a little bit below where you're currently at. But during the summer months, that rate would be $4.72 for all non-residential customers. So pros and cons of this particular structure. It's cost-based. We've developed this based off of the bucket of costs that are assigned to non-residential customers. There is an element of conservation within a seasonal rate. If you are a residential customer that irrigates, and not all non-residential customers do irrigate, but some do, you're going to see a higher rate that's going to encourage you to conserve. Perhaps a bit of comparability. It's not exactly a tiered structure, but an argument could be made that perhaps this is more comparable to the residential rates that you have in place. There's still consistency, right? Your non-residential customers are being charged the same rate. That rate just happens to change based on the seasons. The cons, there's a bill impact. I'm going to show you that on the next slide. Customer awareness, this is a new structure that your non-residential customers haven't seen. So there may be some communication in explaining this alternative. Other considerations, seasonality. We do see some seasonality, and you can see that in the difference between the blue and the orange bars with the non-residential customer usage. There may also be some administrative effort in this particular alternative. Your staff is going to have to ensure that these rates are changing appropriately within the billing system based off of the months that your customers are being billed. So this figure is a little bit different. It shows the bill impact to non-residential customers. We've had to do this a little bit differently for non-residential, because they're not exactly the same as like we see with a residential grouping of customers. So on the left-hand side, these are the number of bills, right? The number of bills issued to non-residential customers. And then on the Y-axis, we're showing the percentage change that these non-residential customers would see in their water bill, the change from the existing rate to this seasonal rate alternative. So a good majority of your customers are going to be within the 10% decrease to perhaps 4% increase. A large number of customers are going to be nearer around zero to a moderate change. Certainly, there are outliers, and you can see that at different ends of this impact figure. But this is a summary of how all those customers and the types of changes that they would see in their water bill. So I'm going to move on to option B. This is our last option of the evening. Again, it's a non-residential option. It's what we're calling the peaking alternative. What we tried to accomplish in this rate structure is to try and mirror what you previously had before you adopted new rates. So we look at different peaking levels, and we've reestablished those levels. We have peaking less than three, which is about 28% of the non-residential customers, it's $2.38. Peaking that's greater than three but less than 14 represents the majority of the non-residential, about 54%, $3.66. And then those high-peaking customers, non-residential customers, that would have a factor greater than 14 and a rate of $4.86. I do want to point out, one of the cons of this alternative is that there would be quite a bit of administrative impact in implementing this alternative. It's not something that can be automated within your existing billing structure. Your staff is going to have to evaluate each non-residential customer to determine what their peaking is, and they're going to have to reevaluate each non-residential customer each year to see if that peaking has changed, and to make sure that the category that they're in is still appropriate. So there's a fair amount of manual labor, if you will, that's going to be required, administrative labor that's going to be included or required for this rate structure. Real quickly, pros and cons. It's cost-based, as is everything that we've presented. There is a conservation signal, right? We're charging non-residential based off of their peaking requirements. I would say cons, perhaps simplicity or lack thereof. This is fairly complicated, trying, explaining peaking factors and how that works. So a bit more of a complicated structure for your non-residential customers. Administrative effort, we've talked about that, as well as implementation, which is also going to be some administrative effort. And then bill impact. So very similar to what we saw for alternative A, is the impact that your non-residential customers will see. So you have number of bills. So you have number of bills on the Y-axis, it's a little bit different, it goes up to 1,200, we see a lot of bills at the minus 4%. But one of the things that struck me in this particular figure is that the number of outliers, right? So there seems to be quite a few non-residential customers that are going to see large declines, decreases in their bills. And you have a fair number of non-residential customers that are going to see some fairly significant increases in their bill. So as a rate practitioner, I like to try and minimize outliers. And we see that in this rate structure and how those bills will be impacted for your So slide 41, this is a summary. It's a summary of the residential bill impact for each of the four options that we have identified and presented this evening. Those options in comparison with the national averages, as well as what the city currently is charging for water service. And then a summary of your average residential water bill. We mentioned that the average residential bill is 18 CCF. So this is the city of Ann Arbor, what you currently charge, $56.06 for an average residential water bill, and then what that bill would look like under the four alternatives that we've identified. And then lastly, is a summary of non-residential customer bills, national average and 75th percentile, the city's current bill at 90 CCF of usage for these customers, and then how those bills would change under each of the alternatives that we've identified. Option A, the seasonal, both winter and summer, and option B with the three different peaking So with that, we'll open things up for any question, discussions that you may have. We're here to answer questions and provide insight.
We are developing a very robust climate action program, and I think some of the assumptions here run counter to that. If we talk about irrigation and we're thinking about golf courses and lawns, then we probably want to conserve energy. But if we're talking about additional trees and locally grown food, then we wouldn't want to penalize someone for that. So just to clarify, it seems like you're still reinforcing a water conservation model, and it's based on household. My other issue is that we want density, and in some cases, we would be penalizing people that might share their home, or, for example, I've had foster children, so you pick up, you know, you welcome two additional teenagers into your home, and do you really want to be paying three times the rate for them that you are for yourself, and would that discourage people? So I don't know that I ask a question, let me see. The $2 million cost shift that we talked about before from non-residential to residential, you're using that assumption still in your two different classes?
We are. We are still using that assumption. We did review the cost of service study report that developed that shift in cost, if you will. And that study appears to be, you know, it is, it's based off of industry standard of practice. I understand that it has been several years since you all have completed a cost of service study, and it's not uncommon to see shifts in costs if you haven't examined that in a period of time. And another factor that I think may be leading to that result is the fact that you now have AMI data, right? And so that's something that previously has not been available. So you really have better information. And in a lot of cases, we have to make assumptions or judgments or look at other things, so that may be another factor that is influencing that cost shift that you see.
Oh, okay. And my last question is, can you describe what non-residential is? Because it's my understanding that most apartments, most high-rises, the University of Michigan, they all fall into that category, is that true?
So I don't know that that is exactly true. My understanding of non-residential, well, let me talk about my understanding of what I think multifamily is.
The boss is here, okay.
I'll step in. Non-residential is just what it says, non-residential. The university dorms, for example, is not a resident, it is a non-residential class. Apartment buildings, where you have discreet, separate apartments, with each with their kitchen and bathroom, that is multifamily.
Is multifamily in the residential or the non-residential?
It's not, it's in its own class. Multifamily is its own class.
Okay. Thanks.
Do I infer, then, that when we are hearing about the proposed tiers, that those were excluding a discussion of multifamily, that you're dealing exclusively with single or duplexes? Is that correct?
Correct. The multifamily as a group displays a very homogeneous behavior of being there month in, month out, and so they don't exhibit a strong peaking factor. They peak, but not anywhere near strong enough.
So it's Arcadis's view that the
I'll let them
Thank you. That the multifamily rate structure as currently contemplated is, you have not suggested that we change that and have not addressed that?
We have not suggested or seen any changes to the multifamily rate structure that we would recommend.
Thank you. I've got Lum Ramlawi and then Hayner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And first, let me thank the Arcadis folks for coming tonight and for your very helpful presentation. What I most appreciate is that you've demonstrated very clearly that there is not just one answer here, and there's not just one, you know, one rate structure, one right cost allocation methodology, or just one right set of customer classes, or just one right set of tiers. And when you put all that together, there's obviously not one right set of water rates. And part of my frustration all along has been that council was presented with one sort of final answer last June with no alternatives, offered or even the suggestion that there were other acceptable, reasonable alternatives. I'm sorry, but it was pretty much a my way or the highway approach. And StanTech did a great job of presenting staff's preferred alternative, but the lack of alternatives or appreciation for the magnitude of the impact on our residential customers left several of us on council, not to mention loads of residents, quite frustrated with the process. So in December, council asked for this review of alternatives so we can consider options. We asked for alternatives, pros and cons of the alternatives, and more benchmarking, and that's what you've provided. So thank you. We asked specifically that Tier Four residential be looked at and that commercial tiering options be offered. Thank you for that as well. The information we've been provided tonight and the responses to my questions and requests for data that were provided last week will be very helpful as council deliberates on where we want to go from here. I look forward to the rest of tonight's conversation and future discussions on this as well. This is a very important topic with real-world financial impacts on our residents. Tonight is not the night, obviously, we're going to decide where we go from here, that's later, but it will certainly help provide the context and information that we all need to make that decision, and we will with the knowledge that there is not just one acceptable path forward. So, and in terms of questions, I have a lot more than what we can cover tonight, and everybody's smiling. I will send those in. So just a couple general questions, this one on customer impacts, if you will. So taking a step back from this, all this, have you, in your 20 years of experience with rate setting, ever seen another example of a water rate restructuring action that so significantly and adversely impacted every single family customer class, every single family customer as a whole class? And for some of those customers so dramatically as this restructuring has, which is more than doubling their bill? And if so, if you have seen this, who were the others? And I would like you to please speak a bit to how they handled the transition. For example, was it phased rather than all at once?
To get started? Go ahead. Okay. So, that's fine. So I have seen water rates implemented with what I would call sharp, a tiered structure. Generally, I have seen those in areas that have a water supply constraint, like California or perhaps the Arizona area, even some in Florida, where those utilities, their objective is to encourage their customers to use less water. That, in every case, has been the driving policy decision behind a tiered rate structure, such as what we see within your rates. None particularly come to mind to name specifically. I can certainly look into that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate if you would.
And then, there was a third component to your question.
How they handled the transition.
How they handled the transition. In many cases, structural changes like this, it's not uncommon to see them phased in over a period of time. Now, you know, one of the challenges with that is it's a cost-of-service one, right? We talk about recovering the cost of that bucket. Well, the benefit of phasing in is that your customers, you know, they have some time to adjust and to really get used to this new structure and its impacts. The disadvantages, if you will, is that you know for a period of time, you're not quite recovering the costs that are in that bucket because you're making this change over time. So there's really advantages and disadvantages to that phasing technique, but that is a technique that we see sometimes when utilities are implementing major changes, or sometimes just big changes, right? If there's a large change that's needed, they'll look at trying to spread that out over time to try and phase that into the customers.
Thank you. And then, just following up later, if you could let us know who those others were, and we could look into that further.
Sure.
I will just say, you know, you talk about different buckets and recovering costs, you know, as many people have pointed out to me, yes, Jane, while this was revenue neutral for the city, because this was, it wasn't revenue neutral for yours truly. And again, for many, despite, you know, some of the percentages, it more than doubled their bills. So on this revenue neutral question, one of the expectations in the December council resolution was that the alternatives presented would be revenue neutral. You indicated that to Ms., to my colleague in the second ward, Ms. Griswold, that this still represents a cost shift of $2 million to residential. Are all the rate alternatives shown tonight revenue neutral?
They are all revenue neutral.
They are, okay.
They're based off of the same revenue that is targeted under your existing rate structure, that same target.
Okay, so they're all, all the rate alternatives are revenue neutral?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thanks. On the tiering, the residential tiering, on slide 11, which is the summary slide of your recommended changes, you say that, quote, "residential Tier Four may warrant additional consideration," end quote. And also, you've created a new set of potential residential tiers, and option four, the 1-16 CCF, 17-20, and the more than 20. So I'm assuming you would not have suggested that as an alternative unless you felt it had some merit? So could you elaborate a bit on what made you conclude Tier Four may warrant additional consideration, as well as the rationale behind selecting the specific usage tiers and the rates that you did in option four?
Option four, sure. So we think that Tier Four, the Tier Four rate could warrant additional consideration because it's high, all right? That's very expensive water at that level of usage. And we see that, we see that impact when we look at the national averages, and especially at higher usage levels. You see that the city's residential water bill, those level of usages, is higher than the national average and 75th percentile. And it's largely because of that fourth-tier rate, it's a high rate. I'm not saying that it's wrong. I mean, StanTech has judgment, and they have a basis that I don't necessarily think is wrong, but I think there are multiple alternatives that we could consider in designing rates. And that was our objective in the fourth option, is if we step back and we really take a fresh look at this, you know, how would, how could we, how would, could we approach it differently with still good judgment and a good foundation to how we're developing the tiers? And that's really what we were aimed at. And again, we looked at level of usage, we wanted to capture indoor usage, looking at winter months, we want to capture average outdoor usage, so we looked at summer months. And then everything above average, that's a third tier, and third highest tier. So that was really our rationale, it's just a different look, using different but some similar judgment as the basis for that tiered structure.
Thank you. The last question for now on commercial tiering. So on the residential option that has uniform rates, you list consistency as one of the pros, as it's the same structure as the other customer classes. I very much agree with that. And that the lack of internal consistency is a fundamental concern that I've had with the structure we adopted. No tiering for commercial, but tiering for residential. So I'd like to explore deeper into the commercial tiering options that you've identified. I'd say clearly, option B is preferred because it specifically ties rates to individual customer usage and peaking. Option A does not do that. So can you please explain exactly what it would take to, you know, quote, "make option B feasible in the billing system," the cost to do it and the time it would take?
Right. Well, I don't have all those specific answers. I don't know what the time would be, I don't know what the cost would be. But I can tell you what I think the challenges would be for the city in implementing option B. And it's going to be in terms of just volume of data. Each individual non-residential customer, their past usage is going to have to be evaluated to determine specifically what is their peaking and what category do they fall into. So that's really an initial implementation, is getting your billing system established with that information and ensuring that the peaking for each of these non-residential customers is correct. And then it's going to have to be reevaluated, likely annually, right? Non-residential customers change. It could be a barber shop today and something else tomorrow. So there'll have to be continual evaluation of these non-residential customers, not only for changes in the customers, but customers may get the signal, and they may change their usage pattern, so you have to be able to capture that. And I think a lot of that would be a manual process that the city would have to go through and track and make sure that you stay on top of. Now, in terms of cost and time, I don't have that estimate.
Okay. I'll be following up on that one. And then, just lastly, while the option A, the seasonal rates, is preferred to no tiering at all? Option B, I do think is much better, and I believe that's what we should be striving to do. And if staff, look at Mr. Hupe, Howard doesn't believe that option B is worth the effort, I'm wondering if staff at least supports option A as it recognizes the seasonal peaking demands on the system?
So that's a question for staff, I believe.
We would look at what it takes to implement that and consider it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Ramlawi.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I do appreciate the study and the fact that it was conducted. This has been extremely helpful. You know, page six, it says rates should be easy to understand and administer, and I think what we adopted last year wasn't, didn't necessarily qualify with that statement. The prevailing guidelines that we have been told that we had to use, and I'm new to this body, as well as a few others, so a few of us weren't here when the first study was looked at. at and adopted, was that there was a bolt decision, a Michigan Supreme Court decision here in Michigan that forced us to look at the cost to service, you know, water to residents and to other folks. And that was the whole argument as to why this fourth tier was justified and justifiable. But obviously, that can be debated, as it has. Do any of these options laid out in front of us today contradict or violate that notion in the cost of service? Are we going to be in trouble if we adopt any one of these, the bolt decision?
Yeah, so, I think a couple of things. First, you know, it's our opinion that no, none of these would violate the principles of, you know, the Bolt Act. You know, that being said, Arcadis is not offering a legal opinion, per se, and so sometimes we do see some difference of legal opinion around certain things. But I feel like everything we've presented here confidently is within the bounds and the guidelines of the cost-of-service principles, which is really what the Bolt decision is intended to enforce. So, we've not presented anything that we feel would present a conflict for you.
Thank you. Now, I was kind of, I was impressed with everything and glad there was some good news here. But I was a little disappointed that there wasn't much given to us on the whole multi-family modeling, cost-of-service pricing. We got great options for the residents and a couple for the non-residents that I'm neither thrilled about, and rather leave things as is if I had to take a vote now on that part. But the multi-family rates, just you kind of glanced over here, and I was wondering if there's, can be any additional information given to us? Or should we just kind of send questions as we need? Or is there any information that can be given to us, because it just isn't here?
Yeah, so, I think Robert will add to this, I'm sure. But, you know, one of the conclusions that we came to pretty quickly is that, A, having a multi-family customer class as its own standalone customer class is very reasonable and appropriate and common. And when we look at the makeup of your community, it seems like a very reasonable conclusion. So, you know, that sort of checks the box of, is this, you know, was the previous study done within the context of industry standards? We feel like yes. In terms of rate structure, I think certainly one could consider alternative rate structures for multi-family. We didn't evaluate that multi-family housing, and our experience tends to be fairly predictable as a customer class in general. And so, you know, we have not looked at a level of detail there. And I think the other important point for us to make is that, you know, this effort was not a full detailed, down-to-every, you know, equation and variable that went into that initial study. That would essentially be redoing the study and would take, you know, an effort of, you know, nine months or so and significantly more cost to do. So, that was just beyond the scope of what we did at this point. I don't know if I'm going to add anything, Robert?
No, I think you've covered. We don't have any concern with the addition of a multi-family class. The only thing that I would add, you know, in our discussions as we were looking at the different rates of customer classes, because we offered a seasonal rate for your non-residential, there was some discussion of, well, should we also do that for the multi-family? But one of the things that we didn't see is, we didn't see as high of a seasonal change with those customers. So, we kind of backed off of that and didn't present that as an option. We just, we didn't see the seasonal variation that would really warrant that option. So, there was some consideration, you know, within the multi-family, even though we, you know, not included as a slide here.
And then, back to the non-residential Plan B, you discussed the drawbacks of doing something like that because of all the digging for data you're going to need to do and constant maintenance on those accounts and the administrative costs in so many different ways. Where did you get the data to present the information that we saw tonight? How was that, was it, I mean, what did we use?
So, Arcadis did not generate any of the numbers this evening. That was generated using the existing models from your previous study. And so, that information was part of those models and was generated by STANTEC. That was kind of a division of the cost and labor, if you will. We reviewed, we developed independent alternatives, but your rate consultant from the previous study developed the analysis of the numbers.
And that peaking was based on what time of day they were using it and not necessarily?
Yeah, the peaking data came out of your existing AMI system and data set that was, you know, evaluated and used and cleaned up for the purposes of the existing rate study. So, for instance, you know, you might find, there's a number of things you'd have to account for, like, for instance, you might find that a customer had, you know, zero usage for an extended period of time, and their meter was dead, and then you had to go out and replace the meter. And so, things like that would be dropped or pulled out of the data set before any sort of analysis is run on it. And so, we used a data set that was previously, you know, analyzed and evaluated as the, under the previous rate study.
Okay, I'll just follow up with other questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Henner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank my council colleagues for indulging those of us who weren't here for the first, some of these questions might seem kind of basic, but that's just the way it goes, so. So, when you approach a cost-of-service study like this, the cost of service, my understanding is the cost of service is for the total production of our city's water. That's correct?
So, you're, I like to call it revenue requirement. So, the revenue requirement is the total revenue that the city needs to generate in order to cover all of the costs of its water system.
To supply all, to provide water to all customers?
To provide water to all customers. It does not distinguish between customer classes. What do we need to provide all water service? That's really step one.
Okay.
And then, okay, I'm sorry.
So, our water utility is a continuum, you might say. We're constantly producing water. Is that correct? 24/7 they're up there? I mean, no, because I've called the plant in the middle of the night for, you know, water main breaks and things. So, is it, is it accurate to say that the cost of water, if I pulled a gallon of water out of that plant at any time during the day, it would cost the same to produce that gallon of water at 3:00 a.m. as it did at 6:00 a.m. or 5:00 o'clock? Somebody's shaking their head no, and somebody's not sure how to answer, so.
It's a complicated question.
Yes, it is.
It's a complicated question. And the cost of service to run the plant varies during a 24-hour period, based upon staffing, based upon electrical needs, and based upon whether we're making water at night to store to meet peak during the day. Those are all variables that go into that costing model.
So, that speaks to this, the capital funding and the debt service and the other things that were put into that revenue model, correct?
It does speak to that, and I'll add, and perhaps this was just an example, but it's not just about the plant, right? There's a lot of other infrastructure, piping, for example, right? Your piping network has got to be large enough in order to provide the water that your customers demand during their peak hour, during the highest demand of the year. That infrastructure has to be in place and available to provide that service. Even though it only happens once a year, that infrastructure has to be there. So, beyond the plant, there's other components of infrastructure that's considered in the cost of service.
Sure, yeah. I've done my chair of plumbing.
Sure.
So, can, now, these are some general questions, because I saw your background with other, you know, your inclusion in all these national utilities and such. So, can a utility, can a utility include in its revenue model needed or planned improvements to the facility? That's what we talk about with, we talk about debt service and capital funding, right?
Yes.
Can a utility include in its revenue model costs related to future environmental cleanup?
Yes, if that's a future capital project that has to be undertaken, then, yeah.
Can a utility require sub-metering of its customers? So, if we have an apartment complex, can we require that, the apartment complex sub-meter so that each unit has its own usage?
I would say it's possible.
Is that a practice, is that a common practice?
It's illegal. I've seen it. I'm not sure I'd say that it's common to require.
Well, you know, as we talk about conservation guidelines.
I see a variety.
Okay.
I see some multi-family that is individually unit-metered. I see older units that are not. It's just one meter for the whole condo complex.
Yeah, I do wonder if we should be shifting in that direction as conservation becomes more important to us as a community. So, we said that, you said that dorms and apartments are considered non-residential, and they're not considered multi-family either. University dorms are non-residential.
Right.
That's the only, what else is in that non-residential class?
Anything that's not a residential customer.
So.
Could be a bank, a restaurant, a barber shop.
So, the dorms are lumped in with the commercial customers, what we used to call "commercial"?
Yes.
Okay. And so, but multi-family is a new category that we set out, and multi-family is defined, not by its use, but there's a zoning definition for multi-family? Or how do we come up with multi-family versus residential? I mean, when you say a dorm, it has bathrooms and kitchens and all these other things, so it seems like a residence.
Yes, and I'm going to turn to either Lynn or Marty to correct me, because I'm going to probably say it wrong. Each unit has to have a kitchen and a bathroom, and then we put it into multi-family at, how many units?
Three.
Three, more than three?
Three dwelling units or more.
Three dwelling units or more triggered into multi-family.
Except for university property? Yeah. So, and residential is defined as a standalone house, not a multi-family property?
Single and duplex.
Single and duplex.
Because it's less than three.
I guess, I guess my concerns related to multi-family versus residential is that 55% to 65% of our, the folks who live here in town are in rental of some type. And our zoning has been kind of leaning heavily towards townhouse-type construction. Are townhouses considered residential or multi-family?
I will look at Lynn again, but.
It depends on how they're metered.
Depends on how they're metered. Depending how they're metered. If they're individually metered, they're residential. If they're sharing a common meter, they're multi-family.
Yeah, Toll Brothers is out there putting sprinkler pipes in for watering their lawns. Okay.
And a sprinkler would be water-only.
All right. I just, I guess I have concerns of the sustainability of certain types of creating these kind of categories as our development moves forward in a certain, you know, in certain forms versus traditional forms of community growing. So, that's not really a question, so I'm going to pass on. I thank you for your indulgence and your answers.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. When we're doing the comparison of the residential water bills, does it include the base rate in that, or is it just CCs?
Yes, so it does include the base, or what I would call the meter charge of, I think it's $20.89, yes.
Ours is, how, do you know how it compares to other communities?
It seems reasonable. One of the things that I saw was that the fixed component of revenue under your existing rates is about 20% of revenue. And that compares, that compares very similarly to other water utilities. The MOA survey that we used in this presentation had an average of 21% fixed revenue. So, at 20%, that seems to be very reasonable.
It's good to have a little stability in the system.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Rumlowe asked most of my question about the option B in terms of the non-residential, but I'm also interested in learning about what that would cost in terms of implementation and sustainability. And then, also, I guess I'd just add to that, and this is more for staff, but what it would, how we would charge those costs? So, would the non-residential customer have to pay for that assessment? Or if not, if it was a charge to the system, how would we then, you know, what kind of impact might that have on rates? And how would we implement those? So, I see it as, anyway, I'm just interested in that. Then, I just had a couple comments, and I really do appreciate the four options, because I do think it, I know you're not using this term, but I do think it brings out very clearly at that lower use, the regressive nature of the uniform rate and that we would be really punishing those who conserve. So, I think it does go against our sustainability goals. And I know you did mention that there were, that the model that we were using with the tiers was modeling on this idea that we want to conserve. But from my own personal perspective, I think we do want to conserve, and that's in line with our sustainability goals. So, I appreciate what you're saying about tier four, that that is extreme, and I'm certainly open to, you know, looking at how we can, how we can address that disparity. I'm certainly not interested in implementing something that was regressive, because I think one of the strengths of this switch that we made was the affordability issue for those typically lower-income families that are using less water.
Got it. Oh, Councilmember Bannister.
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone that just because the multi-family was getting a break on the rates to the tune of the $2 million, that we have no assurances or even indication that the landlords would pass any of that on to the actual renters. Do you guys have any experience or comment on that?
I really don't. I can't say what the intention of what the property owner would do with a reduced water rate and that savings. I'm not sure, you know, how they would react or handle that.
One of my other concerns, too, is that for the single-family home, if they have a leak, which happens to everybody, the toilet's leaking, they're out of town. They didn't turn off the outside spigot, they're out of town. You know, it's happened to a lot of us where, woo, suddenly, they have a very punitive bill. And I know that we're, we've allowed for a small budget for a new system that people could enroll in that would say you're hitting a limit, and try to notify them if they're enrolled in that. Plus, the city tries to give them credits if they prove they bought some toilet flappers and whatnot. But I'm not confident that that will be fairly and consistently applied to the victims, if you will, of a leak.
If a customer has made us aware of an increase in usage, and it is due to a leak, and they can produce, that they've had a plumber come out and service it, or they have purchased their toilet flapper valves to replace it, I can say with 99% confidence, if not 100%, we have granted them the credit. The only exception is if they've taken that same credit within the last 12 months.
Well, I know from personal experience that it was very complex, and I was, in my personal experience, I was at the mercy of the city hall to determine if and what size credit, and even to understand the subsequent bills, you know, that came out as this thing washed through my bills. And so, it was very complex, and so, I understand residents' concern of having to, after the fact, try to get that done.
I'd be glad to review your case with you, but generally, it's pretty simple and straightforward as to applying the credit. They usually go back to look at your historical bills, set that as the usage during the leak, and they give you a credit on both the water and the sewer. So, it's just not only a water credit, it's a sewer credit.
Got it. Follow, one follow-up on tiering. The rationale for the tiered rate on the residential, really a rationale for a tiered rate generally, rationale to reflect peaking. The reason why we have peaking is because the system is built to address the volume, the aggregate volume required by peaking. So, it's linked with the volume necessary. So it's, it's linked with, uh, with the volume necessary that's driven by the peaking. Is that broadly right?
That, that, that is broadly correct in the way that your current, uh, tiered rates were developed, uh, as well as, as, as even some of the options that we presented, right?
And so this gets me to a question of the, of peaking in connect- and so I understand that, that is, uh, with respect to residential, that the peaking results in a change of CCFs, and that that results in a cost to the system. And as a consequence, we pass that cost on. With respect to non-residential, as I he- hear you, the peaking is not an absolute, does not relate to absolute usage, but rather it relates to relative usage. It relates to my particular change with respect to my average, not with respect to the volume that I use in the system. So if I generally use, you know, two CCF, but I peak to eighteen, that's a volume, that's a, that's a, that's a change of nine. And I'll be charged at the rate of nine. But if I have an average of four and I peak to sixty, or probably have average of fifteen and I peak to sixty, that's a peaking measure of four. And so my rate is going to be lower than the lower-usage user. And that confuses, is that accurate? And if so, that confuses me, that, 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 I don't understand why that linkage then runs to vol- I, I don't understand that.
I think what you've mentioned is, is correct. No, I, I, I followed, and, and that is, that is the logic into the, what I call the peaking subclasses of non-residential. It's, it's tied to.
So then how is that, so if the cost of doing, I'm sorry, my apologies.
No, it's, it, it, it is tied to the difference, right? Your, your peak versus your average.
Relative delta.
Right, the, the relative delta.
But if the.
There's two components though that I think might clear this up. So there's the unit cost, and then there's the overall cost. And so, uh, I think you see this much more pronounced in non-residential customers who typically use more water than residential customers do. So even if the unit cost is lower in your example, because it was from fifteen to sixty CCF as a four X multiplier, the unit cost would be less, but you'd be paying at sixty CCF. So that unit cost would get multiplied by sixty in your example, whereas the other, uh, example, the first example of.
Two to eighteen.
Two to eighteen would have a higher unit cost, but only be multiplied by eighteen. And so the structure does still charge additional cost to the larger user, because you're multiplying that unit rate times each of those sixty CCF in the example you presented.
But in this case, the two to eighteen user, the eighteenth CCF costs more than the eighteenth CCF for the sixty CCF user.
I think that's correct.
And I don't understand how that links with the cost to the system. Is there an answer to that?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. The cost to the system is in the variability. If you're a non-residential customer, and let's say for sake of argument, you used fifty CCF day in and day out, the system is sized to handle that on a daily basis. It is used to seeing it, it has a pretty uniform cost. But soon as that peaks, say shifts up to a hundred doubles or quadruples, that's a stress on the system, that the system has to be there to serve whether.
Yeah, I guess I just don't understand why the rela- why, 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 why it's important that it be a relative change rather than an, uh, an absolute change, because the system deals with absolute.
I think that's, uh, and I'm, they can slap me upside the head if I get too far out. I think that's a problem that's because of the non-residential class, because they have disparited use within the class, and the class does not follow, uh, a, a uniform usage pattern. So you're trying to develop a subclass, not a tier. You're developing a subclass that is trying to adjust, and you're fighting the non-homogenous nature of the class.
So you're, we're not calling it tiers, we're calling it subclasses?
Yes, because it's not truly a tier.
I get it. Yeah, please.
Okay, you may get it. Some of us are not quite there. So I, yeah, just in terms of the impact of peaking on allocations, again, I, because I, I mean, I've asked, I've been asking for a layman's explanation of the magnitude of the peaking phenomenon and on costs. So let me just try this out with you, uh, and I appreciate that the mayor's trying to drill down on this too. Okay, it's obviously intuitive that higher volume drives higher costs. I, 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 I get that. What is not intuitive, um, though, is that it costs more than double, um, the base system cost to serve the higher volume. Uh, what we've been told is that the cost to serve an average-day water volume is thirteen point six million, and the cost to serve the peak volume is twenty-nine million. So that I do not think makes any intuitive sense. Um, I mean, what it's, what that's saying is it costs, you know, X to construct, operate, and maintain an entire water, uh, treatment and distribution system, and it costs more than two X to make the system larger. So for the Arcadis folks, sorry, Mr. Hoopy, because I've struck out with you on this one, you know? Uh, but I'm wondering, now that we've got the Arcadis folks here, um, I'm trying again with them, if they can try to explain that phenomenon for the Arcadis folks.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at it.
You have, but you, you keep coming back and telling you, that's what the numbers tell us.
But again, absolute volume is not more expensive. If it's steady volume day in and day out, the system is sized to handle that. It is, when the volume peaks, and the system peaks, i.e. an increase in the summer months, that it is more expensive. And I'll let them jump in and tell me where they're wrong.
Well, now they've been, right.
Well, I think one, one, one immediate distinction that I think I heard you saying so.
Did you hear, you heard my question?
I, I think so. So, correct me if I get this wrong, but you made the statement that building a system that serves X costs a certain dollar amount.
Right.
And to increase the size of the system, we're being told costs two or three times whatever that initial cost was. And I think there is a component of this that considers the cost to build and expand the system to a certain particular size. But there's also a whole, uh, set of costs and impacts that really is beyond just the cost to expand the system to a larger size in order to address the needs of this peak usage. There's also the operation and maintenance costs that go along with that. There's things that are less directly tied to just a linear extrapolation of volume. And I'm not sure if that helps, or if, if I heard your, your statement correctly or not. But I think there's a, a significant influence from those sorts of costs as well.
Okay, 'cause what the, what, yeah, I mean, what we've been told is that, you know, it costs, uh, you know, this one figure. You know, it, that, that, uh, factors in the construction, operation, and maintenance of the entire system. And, um, but to make the system larger, it's twice that. You know, it goes from the thirteen point six to the twenty-nine million.
Maybe I'll restate it and see if this helps. It, it may not be that the cost to make the system larger is a s- is, is a, a multiplier of two or three times.
Love two, uh-huh.
It might be more that the cost of operating and maintaining the system in a state such that it can respond to the sudden big changes in demand is the challenge or is the problem that, that impacts the cost.
You always have to be ready. You always have to have the infrastructure to meet the peak hour demand of the system. That one hour of demand that is the greatest.
Right.
In the year, you have to have all of that infrastructure there and ready to supply water for that high one hour.
Councilmember?
And why, I would just say that we're having trouble, have a difficulty getting, you know, our arms around the commercial, uh, peaking concept and structuring rates that address it, since we know commercial peaks. And, um, later on, if you have any other thoughts, you know, beyond what you've presented tonight on how to address that, you know, other customer subclasses, other pricing structures to get it peaking, that would be great. I'll follow up on that.
So I've got Councilmember Ramloey and Hayner on the queue. Uh, we have walked past, uh, eight forty-five, but we did start late, uh, with council's acquiescence. We'll run these two and then move to public comment.
Thank you.
Is that all right? Great. Councilmember Ramloey.
Thank you once again, Mayor Taylor. I just don't necessarily have a question as much as I want to make some public, you know, statements here. From what I understand, the capacity of our system is dictated to us by the federal government. Uh, it's not something we hear. I remember orientation asking about, uh, what are, what are, you know, we have to have forty million, capacity to do forty million gallons a day.
Certain things that are, you know, required by the state.
We're about to build a new, new, new building, new, new treatment plant, so the state, the state, the state.
Yeah, each, each state can, can, um, can, can dictate certain rules around when a utility has to start planning for a system capacity expansion and when a system has to start actually implementing that sort of a, uh, an expansion if needed.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna have that ca- we'll, we'll have that capacity. I think our overall usage is down, uh, from, from twenty years ago, and hopefully it will continue. Um, so, you know, the, the mu- the, the daily fluctuations and seasonal fluctuations in our system, when it comes to the cost of our facility, in my, my, is a fixed cost, it's a sunk cost. It doesn't seem like we can try to recover that necessarily with the, the, the cost that it takes to deliver water, uh, with peaking. My, my question though is, uh, not necessarily a question, but thought is, are we taking into consideration, you know, these commercial users may have a four-inch, you know, six-inch pipe coming in, feeding them. Uh, residentials have a fifth, you know, less than three-quarter of an inch. You know, the, the amount of volume that that, you know, commercial user, um, you know, put the toll that it takes on the system versus a residential peak user, to me, uh, seems to be something that's, uh, it's not apples to apples necessarily when we're talking, you know, a six-inch, you know, lead versus five, you know, five-eights. So the, that there is, as we discuss more, uh, after you guys are all well and done and out of here, we're definitely gonna have to take a look at our commercial class and a subclass and try to find a way to have a, a, a more equitable and understandable approach of, of, of pricing that. But I don't think we're gonna be able to do that in the time we're gonna have to take steps on raising our, our rates next time. So I yield the floor. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hayner.
Oh, thank you. So in the, earlier in the presentation, you said that residential customers have a relatively homogeneous demand pattern? And that's within that customer class you're talking about?
Yes, within, within residential, all customers are residential, right? So they're all roughly the same type, uh, of customer. Versus a non-residential, you get variations. You may have restaurants and banks and barber shops. You have different types of, uh, non-residential customers with different uses.
Sure, and in all the options you showed for rearranging the residential tiers, the, the, the tier structure that was put into place in, in those, um, is, is what is supposed to reward those of us who use less than seventeen CCF. I haven't gone over seventeen in, for, I don't know, twenty years. Uh, and not punish, but account for those who use much more, those who water their lawns versus those who don't, that sort of thing. Even though you say that the usage is relatively homogeneous, I mean, there obviously must be a great difference between the, the large house with the large lawn and, and my rain garden. So is, that's accounted for in all these tier structures that you've presented for us, you, you feel?
Yes, a, a tiered structure, a tiered structure, uh, would be geared at conservation and encouraging high-use residential customers to use less water. It's a pricing signal to encourage conservation.
And for somebody who has a giant house and a large family, they're just, they're just out of luck, right? Like, there's no conserving at a certain point, right? So, we, we, I mean, I just had some, I've just had people call me up and say, "My bill went from three fifty to eight hundred." These extreme swings in their bills, and it's hard to believe, but that, that's what I'm hearing, and so, you know, those are, I think that's one of the reasons we're here, is that, that concern that it was just too much. And that, and that too much of the burden of this peak is, obviously you've heard this, but too much of the burden of this peak is being put on all residential customers versus the handful that are causing this peak through watering. And so, um, I, do you see that a, a tier structure as a, a, a fair way to make those adjustments inside that class?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I followed the very last thing you said, that the burden of the peaking is placed on all residential customers.
Well, before we had a multifamily class, and, and, I mean, I wasn't at the table at that time, but we were told that the, the, that the residential, uh, customers, the residential class was responsible for this peaking, and therefore responsible for these additional demands on the system, and therefore should, uh, bear a, a larger share of the costs of this system. And so that's where we ended up with today, where we kind of rearranged it. All the multifamily got what was relative to their billing at that time, a, a, a break, or a, they're paying less. And all the residential, relative to the billing at that time, is now paying much more. And essentially, the, the blame quote-unquote was put on these people who are watering their lawns, which isn't me, but, uh, you know, that's, you're right. It's America, water your lawn.
Each, each customer class, residential, non-residential, multifamily, and water-only, is allocated costs associated with peaking of the system. The distinction between the residential class is that the, the, the demand pattern or the, the type of usage that, that, that customer class as a whole incurs is fairly consistent across the board. And so it's easier to, um, just to, to recover the, the peak costs based on the, uh, usage of that customer class. But each customer class is allocated its, its percent, or its proportional share of the peaking costs of the entire system.
And it was found that the proportion for residential was greater than multifamily, say? Or why would there?
Yes, I, I think the total for residential was, was higher than, than, than multifamily, the total cost.
It must, it had to have been, if that's accurate.
And I'll, I'll remind everybody that the multifamily class, um, was it ninety percent or greater? Came out of the non-residential. The multifamily class was not carved out of the residential. It was mo- mostly moved out of the non-residential, or as we refer to it as the commercial class.
Okay, my question was basically about the relative homogeneity of the, the class, so thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Truly, thank you. Uh, we now come to public comment general time. Public comment general time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment general time, one needs not have signed up in advance. Speakers will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time. And finally, if you require assistance in speaking before council, we would be delighted to provide it to you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at public comment?
Hello, I'm Diane Genola, three-two-five-two Alpine Drive. Um, I'm gonna put out a clarification about the multifamily that I hope helps, um, but Mr. QP can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, multifamily rates are, don't have seasonal differences, because we have a water-only meter at most apartments and condo complexes that separate out the irrigation. So we only have indoor water use on that flat rate, and then the water-meter-only rate is for the irrigation. Whereas in residential, you have the different tiers to accommodate the people who are, um, watering their lawns more. So you have that tiered structure to separate them out, whereas basically the water-meter-only rate is our second tier in the multifamily. So if you think about it that way, it might make more sense. Um, the second thing is, sorry, I'm losing my voice. The multifamily is not getting a break. People like to say that here, but it's really just, we were paying too much before. It's not a break where they're gonna give a discount to people. We were paying commercial rates, and now we are actually paying reasonable rates. And if you look at our flat rate along with the water-meter-only rate, it's actually more than if you went to the flat-rate system, that they proposed in this presentation here. So even though we have a flat rate for our indoor water use, the water-meter rate is so much higher that it actually compensates for that. So there is no break given to multifamily. It's just more, it's more equitable and more fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last week, this body had a discussion about how future city councils are not bound by previous councils. I started thinking about the library law, and it occurred to me that the library vote stated "in perpetuity." It's that term "in perpetuity" that really sealed the fate for that location. But likewise, last week you voted in favor of a resolution about solar panels. But likewise, last week, you voted in favor of a resolution about solar panels. And that resolution had the term "in perpetuity" also. I worry that if this resolution was abused, then development could be stalled in perpetuity in some locations because of that term. This is not a council that believes in, this is a council that believes in not binding future councils. And so I'd ask that you remove the term "in perpetuity" from future resolutions. Perhaps my fears are not rational, but that's my concern. It's also a huge pet peeve of mine when council members vote against a raise for the city lawyer, and yet some of those who voted no have been involved in some manner against him. As such, a no vote feels like political retaliation to me, and it isn't based on the merits of the good job that he has done. I pulled the FOIA request, he's done a lot of work. I think of Nelson, sorry, and how the city attorney was involved in the city seal ordinance. I think of Eaton, sorry, and how he was involved early on in the FDD stuff. I think of Bannister, sorry, and how you were involved with a lawsuit. And Chris Walden-Hayner, I have no idea why you voted no. But to me, each of you may have your own reason as to why you voted no, but to me, it certainly feels like political retaliation. Otherwise, have a good night.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment? To speak at public comment, one need only walk up to the podium. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Griswold. Discussion?
Just a question, sorry.
Yes.
So questions can we submit to Arcadis also?
I'd probably drive questions through RFI, and they'll be sent to Arcadis unless there's an alternate.
RFI is staff for those folks.
Or you can also submit them to Sarah Higgins. That's probably the better way to do it.
Some of my questions are for the consultants, that staff would then forward those, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Councilmember, I think where we are in the calendar is these are really budget-related questions because you have to set the rate.
These are water rate.
But within the confines of the budget discussion, if you send them to Higgins, I think it might be more help and easier for you to get the response that you want in that framework.
Okay, these are just, yeah, my, these are additional questions I have.
Yep, they'll go right to Arcadis.
Yeah, about the presentation, again, thank you, Arcadis. But to follow up with Arcadis and staff as appropriate. To send them all through staff is what you're saying.
Yes, we'll get the responses to it as quickly as we can because council very soon will be considering setting the rates, which I think can-
Yeah, this is about the rate restructuring, not the rates.
They'll go together.
Per se.
Councilmember Griswold?
I just want to remind the viewing audience that we'll be having a council caucus next Sunday evening, and we will be having holiday-appropriate, non-alcoholic refreshments. Please join us at 7:00 PM.
Further discussion and the motion to adjourn.
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, returned.